Good evening and welcome to the January 11th regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We're holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are two ways. If you are on your computer, when the commission is discussing the agenda item on which you would like to speak, click the raised hand icon. When the public comment period opens and it's your turn, you'll get a notice. The clerk will unmute you and you'll have two minutes to comment. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting by calling the number at the body, calling the number and meeting ID all at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. When the public comment period opens and it's your turn, press star six. The clerk will unmute you and you'll hear a prompt and you'll have two minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair of the State Elcock.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Tagney.
Here.
Commissioner Davies.
Here.
And Commissioner White. Commissioner White was muted, but I'll note for the record she is here. And Commissioners Barstow and Figueroa are not in attendance at this time. Oh, here comes Commissioner Barstow. So Commissioner Figueroa is not in attendance at this time.
Okay, and at the staff table, we have Director of Community Development David Loyah, and is there anyone else? Any other staff?
Yes, we'll have Senior Planner Delafredes and Deputy Director of Community Development Jennifer Dart.
Okay, good. Okay, so let's move on to oral communication. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communication on matters not on this evening's agenda. Any request that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public who would like to address us on something that's not on the agenda?
I know our Zoom has been a little slow lately, so I'm going to give just a moment for folks to raise their hands if they choose to. I'm not seeing any.
Okay, on the consent calendar, the only items we have are October 26 and the December 14, 2021 minutes. Does anyone need to pull either those items, or can we get a motion to approve those two items? Does someone make a motion to approve the last two minutes?
I'll move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have our first by Commissioner Barstow. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Tang. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Barstow?
Hi.
Commissioner Tagney?
Hi.
Commissioner Davies?
Hi.
Commissioner White?
I was also absent on the 14th.
You can abstain if you wish, but you can also, because it's procedural, vote to accept the minutes into the record.
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Aye. Motion approved. So tonight, we have one public hearing to consider this evening. This is one we've seen before. It's Resolution PC 21-08 amending the Housing for Homeless Combining Zone, allowing permanent supportive housing at two locations in Valley West. But before we open this, do we have any extra type communications to disclose? Judith?
Yeah, three different people contacted me over the past week to talk about this by phone or email. And I, I I don't recall their names, which I'm apologizing about. But I just did want to disclose that. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So before we ask for a staff report, this one's a little bit different, because I guess I have a question for the commission. Based on the council's actions on January 5, you know, this is pretty much resolves kind of a done deal. The council's already taken action. We're only seeing it because this is a procedural issue. You know, we were continuing it. We agreed to, but in the meantime, it got approved. So I guess I'd like to hear from the commission on how we'd like to move forward. Do we even want a staff report? Do we want to just open it for public comment for anybody that is tuning in deliberately to comment on this? Or how do we want to handle this, Commissioners? Commissioner Davies?
I mean, I feel personally like we spent a really a lot of time discussing this. And as you mentioned, since subsequent to our two meetings thus far that we spent discussing it, the council's passed it. I'm ready to move on from this issue myself and spend our time attending to other commission items.
Does anyone else want to comment on that? Or do you agree with Davies? Commissioner Tagney?
I just want to agree with Scott on that.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to not move to the point where the commission would need to vote on this action, since the council has already, in effect, preempted that vote. But I would like to hear from Community Director Loyah about how the whole picture had addressed some of our concerns before we actually move on. So I would like that staff report, but I don't see a need for the Planning Commission to take action on this item.
Commissioner White, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say if there was a member from the public who came to address this, that we might give them the opportunity. And I concur also that I don't see any reason for us to spend a lot of time on this.
Director Loyah, do we have members of the public who would like to speak on this issue?
No one has raised their hand yet, but if anyone is here to speak on the Housing for Homeless Combining Zone Amendment, if you'd please raise your hand now. I believe the Planning Commission is moving towards allowing you to speak. And if you want, I can give sort of the, you know, high-level synopsis, 45 seconds or less, on, you know, how the council addressed some of the concerns that came up during the study session.
I think that would be a good idea, just for anyone who's watching.
Okay. Yeah. And, you know, I think Commissioner Davies hit the nail on the head. There was copious public comment. I don't see anything coming up now. And so, you know, commission certainly under no obligation to take public comment on this. The council did, based on, you know, some information we received from our partners at Housing Community Development, that's HCD, as well as analysis from the city attorney, that the posed changes, as we understood them based on the study session, couldn't be adopted into the ordinance the way that it was currently structured. But that we could incorporate some of the concerns that were raised, in particular, the need for ongoing, you know, public outreach and access to the public to, you know, to make modifications to ensure that, you know, that low-income projects, in particular, you know, those that are serving homeless, have access to those, the operations. And so what we had proposed was to bring the term sheet back for these two projects and incorporate that they include some kind of ongoing outreach and engagement with the community and address community concerns as they're raised. And so we'll be incorporating that into the loan terms as opposed to incorporating it into the land use requirements. And there were some, you know, very technical nuances due to the way that our current ordinance is structured that prevented a wholesale inclusion of some sort of provision. And we, into the land use. And so we can come back and talk about that at another time and look at, you know, if there's ways to restructure those underlying ordinances and whether the, you know, the commission has the desire to do that. So that's, I think, around 45 seconds.
Any follow-ups for Commissioner Tagney?
Yeah, Director Loyah, on the facility operating standards, it outlines that it'll be up to the community development director to be the review authority on that. But that these standards, it appears as though they need to be a written document. And I'm just wondering if that's something that, you know, at what stage in the process does that get fleshed out?
That's a really good question. Typically, for a project that's being funded in coordination with the city, that authority is actually directed through the approval process for the loan agreement. If you look at the two projects that we just approved, the city council authorized the community development director to approve the Affordable Housing Plan, which is essentially the operations plan. They approved the city attorney to draft the loan documents, and they approved the city manager to execute any loan documents or grant documents necessary to accomplish the projects. And so that is a written document that usually gets generated because there's, you know, there's a lot of information that goes into it that isn't known until you know what your funding sources is and what the requirements of those different funding sources. So that usually gets, that document usually gets drafted pretty close to the time when we close on the loans. So what I'm proposing, what we've proposed to the council, moving forward, if these projects come forward and they have a loan component, that we would actually include a draft of the operations plan or the Affordable Housing Plan at the front end, but just acknowledging that, you know, the staff, the, you know, professional staff that are, you know, going through and negotiating the loan terms with various other funding entities and, you know, the requirements that are baked into those other funding entities. We have to have the latitude to be able to make decisions about what gets included and what doesn't get included, you know, ultimately. And so we would use this early approval process to share, you know, generally broad brushstrokes, what's going to be included in the operations plan in the future. If nothing else changes about the ordinance, this is new practice, is that we would bring forward an early draft of the operations plan so that the public, the decision makers can see that. And then ultimately, those Affordable Housing Plans don't get adopted until we're ready to finalize the loan documents and the regulatory agreements.
As a follow-up, it feels as though that's the elephant in the room on this topic, that the letters that we have received, many of them, and many of the public who spoke, are concerned about just how this is going to bleed over into the neighborhood. And as I look down the list of facility operating standards, there's things like case management, client services, behavioral guidelines, parking, emergency plan, security. Some of those things, if those are going to be in that document, that's not going to come up for a while, it feels like that's the main part that everybody kind of needs to see. And just to be transparent, as a city, the agencies involved, it sure feels like that information. The sooner that gets out and is very public, the better. I'm sure it's complicated to come up with that whole document, but it is the part that I hear a lot of people very concerned about. Everybody wants
Really important.
But how's it going to bleed over?
Yeah, it's, yeah, no, and I get that. It's really important to understand that the likelihood, so first off, we're talking about only the parcels that are designated in the Housing for Homeless Combining Zone. So it's only those 10 parcels or so. And it's only the projects that, you know, don't have any kind of city funding, which that's an infinitesimally small number. In fact, we have zero at this point that would qualify in that pathway. So it's a very rare occurrence. But, you know, I know that a lot has been made about this authority being delegated to the Director of Community Development. The reality is that, you know, authorities are delegated to staff level positions all the time, especially with the ministerial review. It's the way that the city functions when you're doing a ministerial review. And there's a real difference between, you know, projects that are authorized under, you know, either a quasi judicial approval process where, you know, the Planning Commission and maybe the city council are holding public hearings and taking input. This law actually requires that we have a ministerial pathway. Now, based on the concerns that we heard, the, you know, the information that came in from the community, we created this secondary pathway that allows us to explore these, you know, these various features, the items in the security plan, the management plan, all those things, through the funding pathways. So we've got a strategy of trying to accomplish what it is that we're concerned with the community, raised as concerns for the commission. And, you know, based on that very limited number of sites where, you know, this would be allowable, you know, as a principally permitted pathway, as a non-discretionary pathway, there's actually very, very little likelihood that these projects would come forward and have no public review in the first place. And in the second place, you know, it's only on a very limited number of parcels. So, you know, I don't, I understand the concern, but I guess it's, it's, I don't know how well-placed, you know, the energy is, because it's just so unlikely that we'd ever get into a situation where there's zero review. The other thing that's important to note is that those items, that the state law lists that we've incorporated into our list, those are established in state law. They say, these are the only standards that you can use. And they're specific to emergency shelters. These are the only standards you can use. And it has to be a ministerial process. You can't require them to do anything that, you know, non-ministerial or that any other ministerial process wouldn't do. And so, you know, so adding to that list or, you know, creating new processes in that list would be in violation of the state law and would put us at risk of, you know, litigation for not being compliant with that state law. So I think, you know, the limited nature of this application is really what's important. And I think, you know, Vice Chair Mayor and I had a conversation the other day, and, you know, she has some ideas about how to change the multifamily regulations that, you know, we can certainly bring up over the course of the next, you know, several meetings, especially as we're starting to dig into the gateway plan and what requirements might be, need to be met for, you know, those types of developments.
Any other questions?
Yes, thank you. And I just really want to emphasize that what I'm talking about here, just the two properties that are furthering this whole topic. And it's really the behavioral guidelines. I had a hard time following your answer, but how this, these properties interface with those neighbors directly is, I think, the area of concern that comes up again and again on this one. So when and where we can see those guidelines will be a very big curiosity to this project or end to this neighborhood.
So, yeah, before we leave this topic, I just want to be really, really clear that the state law does not allow us to have any standards that are above and beyond any other multifamily housing type or permanent supportive housing. The ordinance, as it was drafted, may have changed to ensure that it was clear that behavioral guidelines, operations standards, those kinds of things, you know, security, those aren't required of any other kind of multifamily housing. They're not required of permanent supportive housing either. That's a state law. It's required, and we're not going to force them to do it. What we will ask them to do through the loan agreements, though, is to ensure that there's ongoing community engagement, so that the community, the neighborhood, has the ability to engage with the project component, the project proponents, as well as the city, and say, hey, this thing isn't working for us because of X, Y, or Z. How do we work on these? Both project proponents said that they were open to that and that they were more than willing to include that as parts of their project.
Thank you for that clarity, David.
Anyone else? Oh, Commissioner White?
I was just trying to understand, so the loan itself will be the portion that will allow the community engagement? That's correct. Is that how I'm understanding that?
It'll be incorporated as a loan term, yeah, so that we require them to have that ongoing engagement in the community.
So what would facilitate that process? Say, for example, the community maybe had a suggestion or a concern, or even like, we really like that idea. How would they begin that engagement process? Would they go through community development, or would they go directly to the program managers? What would that look like?
Yeah, I don't have the details before me right now. Again, none of this has been developed, but it's going to be a process that the management team of the facility facilitates. And so they would be, you know, creating those forums to allow people to, you know, participate.
Any other questions? Or is there any member of the public who has a question? No.
Nobody has raised a hand yet.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Yeah, there are a number, there are a few places in the HH combining zone ordinance, which the city council adopted, that indicate that there would be some sort of objective feasibility standards presumably developed by the Community Development Office. And I'm wondering if you can explain the process for developing those standards, which would apply to these two projects as they go forward, and whether there would be any information available to the public as those standards are being developed?
So the majority of the standards are actually embedded in the ordinance itself, the existing ordinance, not the ordinance changes. The, you know, security and lighting and all those standards are included in the ordinance. There are some that are not included explicitly. And what the state law says and what we try to include, not verbatim, but the sense of, in this ordinance revision, is that if it is an emergency shelter, then those feasibility criteria would be based on, you know, is it feasible and practical to implement this? The reason why the state required that these standards be ministerial and objective is so that jurisdictions couldn't prevent emergency shelters from operating within their boundaries, even in these new zones, based on, you know, requiring infeasible measures. And so essentially, what we would have to do is, as a staff, is for, if they presented something, and it, you know, for example, for security, if they came forward with a security plan and said, you know, we're going to have a security person there, you know, one day a week, we would say, that's not sufficient, doesn't meet the objective. There has to be someone there 24/7. And if they showed us that 24/7 security coverage wasn't feasible, didn't, you know, wasn't operationally feasible based on their financial models, then we might have to get into a negotiation and figure out what is feasible. But the standards, you know, lighting, gathering, all those things that are the primary features that are in that list are already embedded in the ordinance. And so we're not developing anything in terms of, you know, creating new standards. They're already in the ordinance. Anything that's related to, you know, another housing type, so transitional shelter, for example, if someone's operating a transitional shelter, they come forward, they show us the plan sets, and they're proposing to do that in a house, single-family standalone house, or maybe a single-family with an ADU. We would look at the single-family standalone ADU requirements in the code, everywhere else in the code, and we would apply those standards to the transitional shelter. That's what the state law tells us we have to do, and that's how we would do it. So this is, this is what I mean by a ministerial decision. There's, there's nothing really, you know, there's no big decisions that are being made here. There's nothing, you know, really outside the box. These are all baked into the code already. They're either building code standards, or they're zoning code standards that we can look to and say, does your project conform to these, with the exception of, you know, for example, the, you know, the lighting requirements and the security. So, long story short, they would all have to be based on some objective standard that's already in a code somewhere, or feasibility. You can demonstrate that it's feasible.
Any further questions? So what's the procedure on this item, David? Because we don't have anything to approve, right? To make a motion?
Well, this was a
Right.
This was a public hearing item that was continued to this meeting. And so if the commission wished to, they could adopt the resolution, making a recommendation that they, that the council, you know, adopt this ordinance. You can make changes, you know, this is the range of options here. You can make changes to the ordinance and then adopt the resolution, or you could just close the hearing item, recognizing that the decision's already been made by the council.
Yeah, maybe I motion to close this public hearing item due to it's already been approved by the city council?
I would like to make that motion, given the fact that the council's already taken action. I would like to make a motion that we close this item and move on.
Okay, we have a first by Commissioner Davies. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Barstow. Can we have a roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Barstow?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Tagney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair of the State Elcock?
Aye. All right, so our next is, we have business item. So the first business item is the draft Gateway Area Plan. And I, do the Commissioners have any, are we going to get a staff report on that? Are you just looking for specific questions? Do you have a staff report?
Yeah, I have a brief staff report, if you'll indulge me. Okay, let me share a screen here. Okay, first, you know, I just want to recognize that, you know, we're always, we're like a snowball. We're constantly gathering new place people to this effort. And so I just want to refresh folks on how to get involved, how to stay up to date as to what's going on with the infill redevelopment program, and a little bit about how to, how to get engaged. Let me update this page here. For one thing, I just want to recognize our fantastic community development staff. We've been really, working really hard to try and make this page more useful. We've been getting feedback from the public on, you know, the organization and the usefulness of this page. And so, you know, we tried to respond and modify as we will continue to do so throughout the engagement process. And so, folks out there in TV land, you know, tell us what you think of our new page. If you Google Arcata and SERP, S-I-R-P, that Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan, the very top hit is going to be the page we were just on. This has all the information about content that has been created, talks about what is infill, what the SERP is, gateway plan, what the general plan is, so on and so forth. Importantly, what I want to point to here is the, how do I get involved? And so a couple of primary ways to get involved. One is to sign up for e-notifications. If you go to the sidebar here, e-notification signup, you click on that link, you'll get to a page eventually that looks like this. And you want to sign up for this long-range planning and community visioning. We'll send out notifications to updates to the plan. We'll send out notifications around when we're having engagements. And we're looking forward to a couple of really cool engagements coming up in January and February. The first is that the, you'll see on this upcoming presentations to city committees, January 11th, we're, that's today, we're doing this Planning Commission hearing. On the 18th next week, we'll be at the Transportation and Safety Committee. Now, in these committee meetings, when we start having the committee meetings, we're really going to try and dig into, you know, some of the technical detail. So if you're, if you're a transportation wonk or, you know, you're interested in alternative transportation, or you're concerned about crossings and intersections or you're concerned about crossings and intersections, come to the Transportation Safety Committee meeting. We'll be talking about that. And again, there'll be open formats, so a lot of discussion to answer your questions. Um, and then we'll be going to Historic Landmarks Committee uh, on the 20th. And then we're going to start hitting the rest of the committee meetings uh, coming up in February. And then also notably, uh, and not on the top of the list here, but if you follow the, how do I get involved, and we'll make sure this gets updated as well. We're going to be having an in-person open house plan for January 21st and 22nd at the Arcata Community Center. Information is on the website here for uh, dates and times. We've heard a lot of people say, hey, look, I just can't participate on Zoom, I don't have access. You know, this is difficult for me, I'm challenged because of this side or the other. To be able to engage with you, I want other forms. We're struggling right now with COVID, uh, and this Omicron thing is just going completely off. And so we're providing this open house as a way to really spread out the number of people that will be in the room at any given time. We'll have a lot of self-guided stations that folks can go to and interact with material and provide feedback. We'll be bringing that feedback back to the decision makers. And so this is a great opportunity, if you haven't yet had a chance to participate because you're um, not on Zoom, or if you know someone who's not on Zoom, please let them know the 21st and 22nd uh, we'll be holding an open house. It'll be staffed by a staff member who can answer your questions about the gateway plan. And we'd love to see you there. Um, and again, the Community Vision Survey is still open. Please take that if you haven't taken it yet. So that's how to get access to information about the plan itself and how to get involved with the ongoing engagement. Um, again, the plan is available on our website. Um, and what I've got tonight is a, let's see. Got for you tonight is a little bit of a choose your own adventure. And so really I like to, you know, follow the lead of uh, Planning Commission. You know, the, the draft has been out since the uh, 1st of December. And, you know, we've had several walking tours, um, we've had several, you know, stakeholder meetings. We've had, uh, you know, various types of engagements. Uh, what we haven't had yet is a real in-depth dive into, you know, questions that the Planning Commission may have. Now, we're not looking for a solid recommendation tonight. In fact, we strongly urge you not to set too entrenched an idea as to what you think your recommendation ought to be. Um, we want you to make sure that you hear from the community, that you hear the public engagement, that you have time to ruminate on this. But we do have time tonight and an opportunity to um, you know, either, you know, at the, at the Planning Commission's uh, you know, desire, we can either open it up and hear a question and answer from the community. Or if the Planning Commission already has a set of questions and you want to dig into this document, you want to look at the policy language, or like, why did we, you know, do X, Y, or Z on, you know, mobility? Um, the night is yours, you tell us what to do. I've got the document here, I've got all of the uh, various sections of it paged marked here. We can talk about any section of it, the plan relationship, how do the nuts and bolts work? Uh, you know, what was the inspiration, you know, uh, looking at opportunity sites, how do those work? Uh, how does the community benefits program work, if that's of interest to you? And then each of the various topics, housing, employment, arts and open space, mobility, street design, uh, street map book, which is an expansion of the street design. It's really interesting, it explodes the views of the streets, so you can take a look at those. Uh, design, historical resources, and infrastructure. So the last thing I will say is that, you know, right now, we're in a heavy-duty um, engagement mode. We're, we're trying to get out as many different types of engagements as possible. Uh, we'll be bringing that, you know, results from that engagement back to the Planning Commission, the council, for them to, you know, provide us guidance sometime early in the spring, so that we can start working on some of the more detailed uh, zoning amendments. Um, and so I guess, you know, with that, I want to open the floor for uh, my colleagues, uh, Senior Planner Freitas, or um, Deputy Director Dart. I tried to lay it in, I'm going to try and let you in again. Um, if you have anything else to add. And then other than that, you know, I'd love to just, um, you know, follow the, follow the lead of the, the commission.
Yep, I don't have anything to add. I'm excited to hear what you guys think about the document so far. Thank you. Do we have any members of the public who have questions, or?
We have several uh, names in the attendees list that I recognize. So are you hoping to open this to?
I think, yeah, I think so. Before we start asking our questions, we'll let the public go, go first.
Okay, it's a great, great approach. So if you have questions, comments, uh, things you wish the Planning Commission to uh, you know, dig into, you can raise your hand, use the raise hand function. And we will invite you in to speak. All right, we have our first taker.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Okay, um, hi, uh, my name is Betsy Elkington, and I teach at Redwood Coast Montessori, um, at which um, our new high school campus is located in the Ten Pin Building, so kind of right in the heart of this um, project. And I wanted to, I have a little bit of trouble kind of navigating um, some of the online resources and the maps, but I'm, we're, you know, we're building this um, community garden just across the bike trail from um, ours, from the Ten Pin Building. And I'm really interested in um, the sort of role of the green spaces and, and how those will be um, accessed by the community. Um, if you could speak to that um, a little bit, in, you know, a little bit more depth, that would be really helpful, I think, as we're visioning potentially what this community garden could become. Um, if it's, I don't even know if it's really um, able to be in the plan, but I'm hopeful um, for our school and for the community that it will be able to be there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I mean, just a, a quick uh, process question for our chair. Typically on uh, discretionary decisions, or typically when you open public comment, you have a, a time limitation. Did you want to set one for tonight, or?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, this is a little different. Um, yeah, I would say two minutes, sir.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this point, or? Uh, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, hello, am I, am I coming through okay?
Yep, we hear you loud and clear.
So um, yeah, it's, I've been working with a, a bunch of citizens and listening to everybody's plans and desires and, you know, concerns and watching it all, sort of. It seems like things are going pretty well on both ends. Um, the biggest concern I would say that I've found in my own research is the whole concerns about the infrastructure constraints with this proposed growth, uh, especially considering HSU's plans for expansion and increased enrollment. Uh, specifically the wastewater treatment processing plant, even with the proposed upgrades that are coming in the future are limited. You know, we're looking at maybe an additional 20% of treatment capacity in Phase 1 and 2, you know, at the price tag of 90 million or whatever that, the, the documents are saying. But that, that only gives us another 3,500 uh, people, you know, or units that we can provide service for. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at that as a, as a plan to try to deal with this as it's all unfolding, you know? And then we've also got the global warming and the necessity of possibly moving the plant down the road in another 30 to 50 years anyway, or adding another facility. So, yeah, I'm looking at the planning and thinking we need to look further down. And, you know, the, I know, we only have two minutes, so I'll, I'll follow up with, uh, I'd like to hear more about the conversations for planning and cohesion and the limitations that need to be placed on HSU's expansion plans, as well as Arcata's development plans for the next, you know, seven, 10 years, 20 years, however long it takes for this to play out. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and uh, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thanks a lot, Chris. Um, let's see, we have community group. All right, we can hear you now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we can barely hear you, but we'll, we'll uh, fix that. We're actually a group of the community, and um, we have um, definitely some questions, concerns. So we've been knocking on doors. So um, as we knock on doors, we're really realizing that there is a vast minor, majority of the people that still don't know about the Gateway District Plan. So we've been asking questions and um, trying to get their input on what their concerns are and um, trying to get them to read the draft. And the ones that are familiar with it, their, their concerns are definitely the size and the scale of this, the um, the heights of the buildings, the um, the traffic is a huge one that people's, uh, that um, just the parking, for, I guess, more of the parking. Um, I've been talking with the light industry, um, folks that own their businesses and been in the community forever, and um, they are very, very concerned um, and a little upset. Um, there's a lot of concerns about um, what this will do to our infrastructure. Um, and um, they uh, especially the treatment plant um, and the environment, the wetlands. Um, there's, um, so I could continue, but um, I just think that, yeah, I know you guys are working on, you know, outreach, and that's great. Um, but uh, I think there's a lot of the underplanning of this that people are confused by, uh, confused by. So I think we would like more answers on exactly um, where the studies are and where we've come to this um, decision as a city to go this huge and this large and have this much impact in so many different ways on our community. So um, so as, as a group, and I'm, I think I'm speaking for the majority of the people that I've talked to, um, I would, I would love, I, I would love to have you guys do that outreach even more so because the public is telling me a completely different story than what I'm hearing from the city staff. So anyways, thank you for listening and listening to a lot of the concerns of the doors I've been knocking on. Um, looking forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and appreciate the work that you're doing individually to help spread the word. Um, definitely uh, networking is part of our uh, you know, our messaging campaign. Um, and so if you uh, are a member of a group, please share it with your group. Again, I'll just put out there that, you know, our city staff are more than welcome, more than willing, rather, uh, to attend a neighborhood meeting, um, you know, community meeting, a church group meeting, a Rotary meeting, whatever your group is, we'd love to come and talk to you and answer your questions. Um, and so that's uh, definitely an important part of this conversation. Uh, go ahead, Ann.
Okay, am I, can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Ann King Smith. I was on the Planning Commission when the general plan was developed. I have um, a number of issues that I'd like the Planning Commission to look at. If I were on the Planning Commission, this is what I, a few things that I would be interested. And I think one of the things that should be included, one of these is to be included in the gateway plan, is um, a discussion of how we got to the number of 3,500 units? What 3,500 units recommend, would represent in terms of the percentage of increase in population of Arcata? What about infill in other areas of the city? What proportion is Humboldt State going to take on in terms of units? And I think that the context for this plan, how it came about, is missing from the plan for those of the people that haven't been involved in either the housing element or the infill um, plan that you uh, that you uh, contracted for. The other thing that sort of comes across is, we've got to get this done, but it's also noted that we haven't met the population increase predicted by the general plan. And yet, we're going ahead, we're doing even more, even though we haven't met that increase. And so I think people need to step back and look at this and say, is this really the scale that we need to go? In terms of that, I think that I would recommend, and I hope the Planning Commission recommends, that we stay within the general plan and limit the number of stories to four stories, which is what the general plan recommended. Five, six, seven, eight stories is simply not appropriate for Arcata. It's not appropriate for the county that we live in. And um, uh, the business of allowing extra stories to be purchased essentially by wealthy developers by getting amenities is a method that I've never even heard of and seems inappropriate. The amenities that are listed, for the most part, should be requirements for any project. And the last thing I'd like to ask the commission to consider is the um, form-based and streamlined development standards, where essentially you, you think you can get enough standards, so you can have ministerial approval of projects, which means there's no public input, there's no planning commission review, there's no city council review, and you're getting a cookie cutter to try and get projects, which does streamline them. But then you're not doing planning, and you're not learning, and we're not getting the sort of um, organically developed-
And I'm, sorry, I just was going to ask for you to wrap up your comments. It's a little over two minutes at this point.
Done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Greg, go ahead. You can unmute Greg.
There, how's that?
It's great, we can hear you now.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I want to, I want to second Ann King Smith's comments. Uh, I think that in particular, one of the things we're looking at is uh, other uh, you know, GPU updates, if you will, in other areas of the city. And uh, we do need to know whether uh, there is any planning for that type of thing going on right now. And if so, then uh, SEQUA, I think, would require that uh, those are noted uh, and what the uh, conversation is right now at the city. Uh, also, uh, we are looking at the Humboldt Bay Sea Level Rise Adaptation Plan. Um, and this is nascent for us, we're just starting to kind of dig in here. Um, but preliminarily, it does look like um, there will be saturation levels uh, in the lower parts of this planned area where uh, the eight-story buildings are being planned. Uh, and that does not seem appropriate um, in terms of really preparing for sea level rise and climate change adaptation. Uh, I think that you really start, need to be looking at higher ground. Uh, another thing that's concerning is, and you know, this may be off the mark here, but I, I really don't think so, is that coincidentally, the college needs about 10,000 more beds. And, and at the same time, the city is planning 10,000 more beds. So I do think, as, as Ann uh, mentioned, we need to know more about the uh, state's uh, involvement with the city, the conversation that the state and the city it, um, is having over these types of issues. Uh, I think the city should be releasing documentation uh, that has been traded, you know, information traded back and forth, conversations with state officials. Uh, what is the state planning for us? Uh, we really deserve to know. Um, also, the previous community group representative uh, really hit, hit the mark when people just don't know this is happening. They're going door-to-door, the city needs to be going door-to-door, at least with a mailer, to every um, address with all the information. And here's how to participate, that kind of thing. You know, people are very busy. And the last thing I'll say, and there's a lot more than this, uh, a lot of problems with this plan, um, is that unless the city really gets its act together prior to even beginning this type of process with traffic and the impacts of the automobile and limiting automobile access to areas and the ability to speed on our roads, uh, then the, this will be a major fail uh, because Arcata will become unlivable with the cars. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I am not seeing any other hands uh, right at this minute.
Okay, thank you.
We got a couple more that popped, we had a couple more that popped up, sorry. Go ahead, uh, Jim.
Hi, uh, thanks, David.
Hi, thanks, David. I'm gonna hit again on the Marsh Treatment Plant because I think it deserves discussion. The Arcade of Marsh Treatment Plant is due for repairs and upgrades. Phase one has yet to begin. The phase would mostly just address the present demand. The Gateway Plan calls for 3,500 new housing units, more than likely a population increase of 7,000 people. This does not include the first store commercial facilities, which would add additional plumbing fixtures. In addition, HSU is planning a number of housing units. Also, in August 10th Planning Meeting, Director Lawyer explained that the Gateway will be the template for additional Arcata developments, combined possibly an additional 5,000 more housing units or more. How is the city planning to address the increase in the treatment demand when it has yet to address the present needs as far as what's going on with the repairs presently on the on the treatment plant? Thanks. That'll be it.
All right. Thanks a lot, Tim. And we have a call-in user with ending 7559.
Hi, this is Connie Stewart. First of all, I'm speaking as a resident of Arcata, but I do have to say that no, I do work at Humboldt State University, and no one has had a conversation about building 10,000 units. So that's an incredible exaggeration on what we're talking about. And the other thing I should mention is that Humboldt State is actively looking at putting units in other communities, not just in Arcata. Now, let me just say, as a former city council member, I want to say that as I listen to conversations about housing, I feel like I made a critical mistake. You know, we had a philosophy of protecting the green belt around Arcata. We never wanted Arcata to grow beyond its current zone. And the the trade-off we always made was we knew we were gonna have to grow up. Now, how high we grow, I'll leave that to the Planning Commission, but we always knew that we were gonna promote infill. And so it's paid me over the past 20 years to listen to conversations. I feel like it's renigging on the deal that we made when we created the green belt around the city. We need to have infill. I'll leave it to the Planning Commission to determine that. As a housing justice person, I can say that I feel like liberals in the community have really helped exacerbate housing crisis for working families and that Arcata needs to do its share, not just for low-income people, but also for working families. Nurses and firefighters deserve to be able to live in in the community in which they work. And so I I do want to say that I'm proud of the city for having this conversation. And and I support a robust conversation that leads to affordable housing in the region for working families. And and I'll just stop there. I thank you all for your service. It's not easy. I was on the Planning Commission. It is not easy to be there. But I hope that you make a decision that will allow working families to live in Arcata.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're we're also we're seeing another gap in hand, so nothing raised right now.
Okay, so any member of the commission have any feedback for David and Dilo? I can't see everybody.
I have a question.
Commissioner.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Commissioner Tagney?
Yeah, thank you. David, I don't know at what stage in the process engineering challenges to all of this start to get resolved. One I heard recently on a radio interview with an engineer was about depth of foundation in these bay lands, you know, lacking any kind of rocky substrate could be cost prohibitive. And I don't know if you're running into that, if those kind of conversations have started to occur. You know, how many stories can you go up before? There's just some engineering realities that start to weigh in and reduce the height of eight stories down to wherever the affordable level is. And I'm not asking for an answer, but I'm just really wondering between that and all the stuff that comes up about sewage treatment plant and stuff, when do engineering studies about this project start to occur?
That's that's a really great question, Commissioner Tagney, and we've definitely heard it from the community about a range of different infrastructure types. The, you know, this planning document is is high level, it's policy level, it's intended to set the stage for implementation. So this document is not responsible for identifying engineering level detail on specific development projects. That would happen at the building permit stage. But the document does need to lay out the framework for the future vision for all of these different areas, you know, land use, housing, employment, et cetera. And so with respect to infrastructure, you know, certainly the size of the infrastructure, the types of infrastructure needs are highly dependent on the size of the community that's planned. And so to plan the infrastructure and present that in this document before we've even had the community conversation about how high the building's going to be, how dense are the buildings going to be, what are the land use restrictions going to be, would be putting the cart before the horse. We have to understand what we're building to before we can start those engineering plans. And I'll point to, you know, recent implementation of our General Plan 2020 that was, you know, a game changer for for the community, you know, complete change in in circulation patterns and access and and movement throughout the city was the extension of Foster Avenue. The extension of Foster Avenue was envisioned and considered in 99. And, you know, or in the late 90s, and it was incorporated in the General Plan update in 2000. And it wasn't built until 2017, 2018. I can't remember exactly when that that project was built. So almost a 20-year timeframe. And you can imagine if we had done real detailed designs based on, you know, whatever we knew in 1999, they would have been completely obsolete when we actually went to build them in in 2017. And so the level that this document is hitting, what we're trying to attempt to do with this document is to identify the desired future conditions. Once we've gone through the process, the public engagement and incorporated that, decision makers have said, yes, this is our future Arcata. Then depending on, you know, various thresholds, various triggers, when those pieces of infrastructure might be needed, and they're gonna be highly dependent on how quickly we grow, how how robustly this program, you know, gets built out, that at those stages, those pieces of infrastructure would be required. Some are gonna be needed early on, you know, you can't, you know, you can't buy just a portion, for example, of, you know, water tank. You have to buy the whole thing. And so right now, based on our current need, we're planning to install an additional water tank to to service what we call Zone One, which is a large part of the the lower lands in Arcata. That water tank is being paid for in part by, you know, grant funds, it's being paid for in part by user fees, and it's being paid in part by development impact fees that we levied on recent projects that were that were approved in the last, say, five years. And so we have a whole different type, a whole suite of strategies for financing that. And we're in the process of doing the designs and, you know, this is something that, again, we knew we were gonna need when we adopted the general plan in 2000. So the difference between project implementation and plan development, you know, there's a there's a wide gulf there. We do have to do enough environmental analysis on these updates to ensure that we've, you know, adequately addressed and identified the mitigations that are required to offset any environmental impacts that will result from this planned growth. And those will be identified and programmed into the plans ultimately. But there's there's a broad gulf between making a plan, yes, we want to do this, and then actually doing it. So I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you very much.
Vice Chair Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm I'm glad that this gateway process is going to be ongoing, that we've got nearly a year to be working on it. Perhaps more. And and I'd like to make a request, which is that we take advantage of the opportunity to link explicitly and directly any gateway plan to the local coastal program update. And I I think that the concerns about infrastructure with regard to the sewage treatment plant, to the ability of soils to support large buildings, all of those things really point to the need to address decisions in these two plans in tandem and and not to pretend that somehow we can work on one in in one corner and the other in the other corner. And secondly, and I I've said this before in other contexts, but since Connie Stewart actually did speak up just now, I'd like to make a plea for the city and HSU to discuss mutual needs in the open in the context of this plan and to make sure that the public participation process in this planning effort and encapsulate and encourage an open and transparent approach by HSU with regard to the university's needs. There there are a number of places in the city where a previous lack of transparency and openness have caused some serious problems. And and in this case, I think we have an opportunity to do it differently, and I'm super, super glad that Connie Stewart, with all of your experience, is going to be engaged in this process. But I the more upfront and transparent the city's interactions with HSU, HSU's interactions with the city, on this one can be the better off we're we're gonna be in developing this plan and others. So.
Yeah, we've, just to respond real quick, we've definitely made an effort to engage in particular HSU students through, you know, the planning efforts leading up through the housing element and the infill market study. You know, we'll continue those efforts and certainly to the extent that the university and the city council, the, you know, city manager's office, you know, you know, develop those those co-engagements, if you will, you know, we'd certainly welcome that. And just to the LCP, I do want to let the Planning Commission know that we are absolutely working in tandem. You know, the ideas from one plan are, you know, being leveraged into the other. And the intent is ultimately that the portion of the Gateway Area Plan, once it's adopted by the city that's in the coastal zone, that will then be submitted again for a local coastal program update. So that'll be, you know, we'll have a couple of quick successive LCP updates, a comprehensive update from our 1989 plan to revise and and get become consistent with our current zoning and current thinking. And then as soon as the, you know, and that's on that's on some grant deadlines as well coming up in in the early part of this year. And then as soon as we have the information or the the adopted Gateway Area Plan, we'll turn around and do a subsequent update to that comprehensive update to incorporate the the Gateway Plan. So those planning efforts are definitely going on simultaneously and informing one another.
Commissioner Davies.
Yes, I just wanted to say that one of the one of the comments that I hear most regularly about the perceived impacts or anticipated impacts of the Gateway Project is the question about cars, which I find so baffling in some ways for a progressive city like Arcata. My understanding really is that the short answer is there's no way we could expand the population housing availability the way we need to and plan for everyone to have a car. Is it not, is it not accurate that the city's view on this is that not providing space for every new housing to have their own parking is going to be an important part of this and that it will drive? It's a very, it's very connected to increasing the viability of public transport?
Yeah, that's that's a great way to sum it up. You know, first, I think a lot of people have heard us say this plan de-emphasizes, you know, parking, and they've translated into that into the city isn't providing any parking. The plan absolutely does, you know, call for both on-street and off-street parking into the future, and so that'll be a component of it. It de-emphasizes, though, it it based on, again, the the engagement that we've had, the direction we've received from council. You've hit the nail on the head, Commissioner Davies, that we're not intending to provide one parking space for every unit, recognizing that for every parking space that you're taking away some housing. And so there that policy balancing, do we want to make sure that everybody has a free place to park? Or do we want to make sure that there's places for people to live? The council and the commission has historically come down, and we've created this plan based on direction that we want to have places for people to live. There are some creative ways that we can, you know, approach ensuring that there's adequate or maybe even excessive parking. It might be a better use of land to have, you know, parking structure, for instance, and maybe that parking structure can accommodate more parking than the onsite uses require. And in that way, that parking structure could help facilitate parking for for other uses that are offsite. Because, you know, this plan is not going to eliminate parking or people using cars. And if we did that and we said, look, in addition to, you know, you can subtract that from your height, for example. So, you know, if you're allowed a five-story building and you do three stories of, you know, parking, then you would have an eight-story building, wouldn't wouldn't count that as an eight-story building, we counted it as a five, and you'd be required by the amenities for a five-story building. That would be one way of, you know, tilting the balance, this policy balance, back towards cars. If we said, hey, this is important for us to have cars. Now, again, there's another lever. Each of these different levers, you know, pulls in one direction or the other. People have said, you know, look, eight stories is just way too big for Arcata, can't be done. And so to the extent that the community conversation leads us to the idea that we want to increase density, but we just don't want to increase it that much. You're gonna reduce the amount of, you know, housing that you have and potentially the amount of parking that's available as well. So these are all of the sort of policy weighing that we need to do. We've created a plan. This draft plan right now reflects, you know, our best interpretation of public engagement to date. We're now in a process where we can get additional feedback on that. But you are absolutely right. This plan doesn't right now call for a one parking space per unit provision. And in addition, beyond just making it so that, you know, parking may become a little bit less comfortable and maybe even problematic in the future, it goes beyond that and provides programs to ensure that there's, you know, infrastructure for, you know, non-motorized transportation that's built into the project. Because without the infrastructure, you're not gonna have the use of those non-motorized. It builds in, you know, car share, bus share, other alternative modes of transportation, programs to help support those those alternative modes come into our our region. And so you know, currently, what we've done, our parking management strategy, like in the downtown, for example, where we have these exact same currently in a current code, we have the exact same provisions. If you build a unit, a mixed-use building, for example, with commercial on the ground floor and seven or fewer units on the top floor, you have to provide zero parking spaces currently in the existing code. The the reasoning being that, you know, we're trying to move towards this alternative transportation and make parking difficult. That has some impact, you know, very, very minor, but it has some impact. If you go that step further, like we're doing in this plan, and actually provide infrastructure and support for these other alternative transportation pathways, then in the future, eventually, we'll have, you know, robust, robust alternative transportation that will be sufficient and convenient for some people, not everyone, but many people to be able to use as an alternative to having their own car.
Yeah, I find the I I just I I find the the focus on cars baffling, especially for a city like Arcata. I would also like to, you know, take a little bit further the comments that Connie Stewart made. And I think it's important that if people And I think it's important that if people want to come out and say that they're opposed to taller buildings in Arcata, that they should also be willing to say that they're for sprawl out into the green area around Arcata, because I simply don't see how we're possibly gonna hit the kind of housing increase that we need without doing one or the other. And I think there's currently a place where it feels somewhat safe to say taller buildings are not, don't conform to people's vision of Arcata. But I think adopting that position implicitly sort of states that you're, you're, you're pro sprawling into the green areas around the city, which I also find kind of upsetting. Lastly, I want to echo Vice Chair Mayor's comments about creating some kind of transparency around communications between the city and the university. I think to the extent that either the city council, the planning commission, or equally importantly, the, the public in, in general are aware of conversations. I think it can go a long way to sort of preventing some of these concerns from getting too far down the road. When, when they can be addressed or people can have a, an idea of the kind of active conversations that are happening between the city and the university. I don't know if there's a specific group of representatives from the city and the university that are tasked with this kind of communication. If so, I, I think, I think transparency around what those communications are like. I just want to echo that I think that could be really useful, save a lot of staff time from the city, save a lot of confusion on the part of the general public and be just all around a good investment in transparency. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, I originally was gonna say something, but I do want to also just piggyback on what Vice Mayor said and Commissioner Davies in that I feel like it's super important that we don't repeat the mistakes of the past and that we really do make sure that we have open minds of communication and collaboration. While there'd be like a stakeholder group, you know, with the key officials at the university, with the city. And then I guess my other question, or not question, but just an idea, and I'm sure that it's already been put out there, but maybe some kind of incentive, like if you leave your car at home, you get, you know, a break on your rent or some other kind of opportunities to encourage people to look at alternative transportation models as opposed to bringing their car.
And one of the programs that I'm not exactly sure how we, you know, impose this, and maybe it's not an imposition, the community benefits program, the way it's designed, is, is somewhat elective. But the, you know, right now, the parking is not, doesn't have the kind of market that it does in other jurisdictions. San Francisco, you think of San Francisco, it's, you have to pay to park in San Francisco, even if you have a, a house, you know, or, or an apartment or whatever in San Francisco proper, chances are good that you're paying for a space if you want one. And so decoupling the rent from the parking is a way to do that. And we've, we've definitely got that embedded as a, as an option.
I have a few comments. Definitely Ann King Smith, I really miss having her on the commission with us, she was wonderful. Everything that she said really needs to be looked into. And then as far as my opinion is, it, it seems there were never really any other options than the multi-story buildings. And to me, they, as a person that walks through the city of Arcata probably every single day, twice today, because the sun was out. It blocks the sunlight from the houses, it blocks the green spaces, it's, it, there's a lot of noise and echoing all the shade, which is terrible this time of year. It's freezing when you have buildings on either side of you. I'm, I'm just not crazy about the vast multi-story housing. It's just like this was the original plan and all along, and despite public input, it just has never changed. It's always been the same. So I'm not crazy about this plan, but I, I understand logically, I, I do, I really get it, you know, you don't always get what you want, but I don't like these huge multi-story buildings, it's too cold during the winter and moldy and it's like, ugh, just too much shade for me. But that's one thing. Then the other thing is, we were talking about transportation and the buses. I never ride the bus, but I have a disabled daughter who 100% rides the bus, that's all she does is ride, ride the bus. And they're not, our, our bus hubs are not coordinated. Like her worker can ride somewhere on one of them for free, but the next one they have to pay. It would be really nice if they could get, all get coordinated and you can buy one bus pass that'll take you from here to Fortuna. It's a mess and, and she can't figure it out and I, we have to help her. And if she can't figure it out, a lot of people can't figure it out. So our, our transportation could be a lot better, in my opinion. And then as far as working with HSU, we really need to work with HSU, no, everything needs to be transparent. I, I grew up here in Arcata, I benefited my whole life from having HSU here. I mean, just, they're just wonderful from, anyway. But we need to really work together as a team, because it hasn't been that way. That whole village thing was really caused a lot of conflict and it didn't need to be that way. And we, we really need to work with HSU a little bit more and be a little more transparent, open and be, be a team. So, that's my opinion. Does anyone else have anything else to say on this subject? No? Oh, okay, Commissioner White?
Oh, I guess I did ride the bus for some time, because I wanted to see how efficient our bus service was. And I concur, we can do better. I think that if we do that, people are more likely to ride the bus. I know that we've talked about making buses free at one point and I know that that would be quite costly. There are match grants out there. And then the other thing is that my daughter's father is legally blind, so he has no choice but to ride the buses. And it's been a big hardship for him in trying to navigate it. And, you know, he has an MBA, so, you know, it's not like, yeah, just putting that out there that your daughter's not the only one who has difficulty navigating the bus system.
Commissioner Barstow?
One of the programs.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to highlight because the conversation around the buses, that we do have a program in the plan that essentially allows for a bus pass program, similar to what we did on Sora Place, where each of the units gets a, a bus pass. Kind of the idea being that, you know, right now, the supply is so low that there's no demand. It's, you know, more difficult to ride the bus. If you, if you don't absolutely have to ride the bus, you're probably not going to. But with this program, it'll help fund more busing and then eventually we'll have the supply. So we can build, build supply before the demand and then the demand will, will grow with that. Because jumping on a bus will be easier than, than taking your car. That's kind of the, the vision there. And, and to your comments, Commissioner, Chair, the State Alcock, we absolutely have been in conversations with the HTA, trying to get a more integrated, across-system platform. Because you're right, it's just the hotch podge of bus services just doesn't work effectively together right now.
Commissioner Barstow?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. When we look at the plan and, and see the, the huge amount of prospective development that's included, there's a tendency to, to say, wow, this is way too much, this is horrible. But the thing is, what, what's being created is a template for development. It's not development. The development won't be done by the city. It will be done by individual developers who invest their own money in, in building needed buildings. Because they're investing their own money, they aren't going to build buildings if there's no demand for them. So what we're looking at is a very long-range plan that may never be fully built out. Because it's going to depend on voluntary actions by private property owners. And I do, I just want to point out for perspective, when, when I landed here in Arcata in 1976, the population was around 8,000. Today, it's around 18,000. And so we can look around and say, well, this happened, you know, there's, that's a huge increase. So I just want to suggest that going forward, the, the increase in population will be incremental and not happen all at once. And as we go along, all the questions about the infrastructure and traffic and parking and so on will have to be answered for each project as it comes up. So anyway, I, you know, I, I think we just need to keep pushing ahead and, and refining this project, but knowing that it's a long, long-term plan and it's not going to happen suddenly.
Very good, thank you. Do we want to move on to the next business item?
Yeah, I will just let you know that there is, I know you closed the public comment portion, but I think there's one more person that's raised their hand. If you wish to let them in, there may be others that raise their hand as well, so just, it's up, it's up to you to.
Why were you here? Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, go ahead Cindy. Cindy, I, I don't think we can hear you properly. Do you want to try and maybe move closer to the microphone?
Or maybe hang up and call back real quick?
Is this better?
Oh, yes.
That's much better.
Did I sound like Mickey Mouse?
I wish, I wish I could play back for you what we heard.
It's funny, I have to change, I have to change it all this back and forth. Anyway, I just want to say that I do a lot of, I live in Arcata, I, I commute mostly 99% of the time on foot or bike. And so I just wanted to comment on public transportation of, I love how your plan, you know, sets up people to move around Arcata. But if you try and leave Arcata, that is, I'm hopeful that there's more lobbying with other communities. I mean, if you're trying to get better transportation, because if you try and go to San Francisco, the Greyhound bus dumps you off on a sidewalk at 10 o'clock at night. They used to have, have a transportation center that you could go to, but they closed that. If you try and go to Redding to catch the train, the train leaves at 3:00 in the morning. If you try and go to Crescent City, there's only one bus going up there. You know, is there a way to get the Greyhound to go farther now instead of stopping in Arcata? I've traveled a lot by public transportation from this area and it's just really, really difficult. And so trying to keep the cars down for people who are gonna want to leave the area and not have to depend on the public transportation. Because I'm, you know, as other people are concerned about where will these cars go if there's no public park, you know, if there's no parking with this project? You know, is it gonna, are they going to park, you know, two blocks away, leave their car until they need to go down the Bay Area, which is affecting, you know, the residences who live in, in the area that are getting impacted by cars. So I'm hoping that there's going to be a bigger, bigger view on public transportation beyond just the Arcata borders.
All right, thank you.
Is there someone else, David?
Don't see anyone else at this time.
Okay, so let's move on to planning commission and training. I'm excited to hear about planning commission training, some training classes for us.
So this item, I'll, I'll just queue up and then I'll, I'll turn over to Vice Chair Mayor. This, this item was originally requested by Vice Chair in relation to a couple of procedural things that had come up and also just to, to ensure that we had a conversation around, you know, the process, we have a lot of new planning commissioners, we've done some orientation, but I think it was just called for as an opportunity to, to talk through some procedural issues and, and then make a call for, you know, some additional training. So Vice Chair Mayor, if I could maybe turn the floor over to you and you can kick off the conversation. And I, I think we can have just sort of a, you know, open, ranging conversation about these items. Oh, I will mention too, that I did send to you this evening a couple of resources related to this, this topic, just as a refresher for, for some protocol and procedural things.
Hi, um, yeah, thank, thank you, Community Development Director, Loya. I, I didn't realize that I would be speaking at this meeting about this, but I, I did kind of had, have a list of things that motivated a request to have this on the agenda. You mentioned training and, and maybe to start off with there. In the past, the city has budgeted for specific types of training and then done training for city staff, commission members, council members, kind of all together with an occasional event that people could attend. Interestingly enough, as we've moved to a virtual world, that's also opened up a lot of opportunities for people to seek training that's, that's more specific to what they need to learn. And right now, because we have a fairly new set of planning commissioners and a very new set of city council members, it, it does seem like we're in a position to seek opportunities for all of us to get some training that we specifically need as a commission, but also as individuals. We're all coming from different places with different sets of skills and experience. For, for several years, we've, we've all had sequoet training at various points. We've had training with regard to historic resources. We've had a number of different opportunities, all of us together. Right now, and I think over the next year, we're not looking at events where a group of people will physically get together in a very large room and, and get training by some outside source. There are a number of online and virtual and web-based training resources that I would love the city to be able to benefit from the planning commission, city staff and members of other committees as well as the city council. One of them is the Planetizen Training Base, it's a subscription-based service, which I've, I've kind of pointed out to various staff members as a resource over a few years. It's not super cheap, but it's also a great bargain. And I, I, I'd love for the city to make that available to commissioners. There are also a number of organizations that the city is a member of with their own training resources. If there's a way to extend those to planning commissioners, that would be terrific. The Institute for Local Government is one of those. And there's also a possibility of training through the Association of Environmental Professionals, the American Planning Association. So while we're still doing some budgeting with the city council, it would be terrific to see those opportunities made available, not just to the planning commission, but to city staff and the city council and members of other committees as well. So that, that was, that was one of the, the training issues that I wanted to bring up. A second one has to do with the protocols that the city council adopted years ago and has been renewing every couple of years or revising or at least reviewing every couple of years. And it has to do- And it has to do with, among other things, what planning commission members need to think about in interacting with other city bodies. And some of those things came about as a result of bad decision-making or problematic decision-making by some individuals, which resulted in problems for the commission as a whole. But it would be great to have an opportunity to review those expectations and to talk about them with the planning commission. And if there are changes that we'd like to recommend, that might be an opportunity to do that as well. And the third thing that, that came up, and this also has to do with potential conflicts of interest and introduction of bias, had to do with the degree of detail that was in the minutes. And I know that city staff has sort of looked at how to make the minutes both clear, but also really consistent between issues across time and from one meeting to the next. So that, that was kind of the, the reason that I put in a request that we should talk about the protocol and training issues. Conveniently on the same day that we're going to be talking about the planning commission's report to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner White, do you have a question?
Um, a comment, if I'm allowed? I agree, or I got real excited when I saw the training. Because I feel like, I know I could still use some. I used my own funding and took local government planning. I own the California book that Judith had recommended to the planning commission, as well as the Planetis, and I'm also a member of the APA Planning. And I've done a Brown Act workshop and honestly, I still feel like I need more. And I feel like if we have the new city council, they're certainly going to want these resources as well. And I think it's been a while, if I'm not mistaken, since there has been a formal or official training or workshop that has occurred for the commission and possibly even the city council. I, I think the city council has had some actually, but I don't think we have for some time, at least not since I've been here.
Yeah, for the, for the training, we've definitely had a couple of lean years, lean budget years, where previously, as Vice Chair Mayor had pointed out, we used to have a budget, a regular budget. And we'd, you know, do at least the, the Environmental Planner Associations, annual upbeat to Sequa and everyone, all the planning commissioners would go to that, staff would go to that. Those got axed from our budget a number of years ago and we had a couple of lean years and we just really truly have not, you know, gotten back on our feet. Last year, the planning commission included in their, their annual report to the, to the city council that they wanted to have training budget allocated. This is an overlap to the next item, but it's also included in your current year for the, for the annual report. And you could certainly make, you know, more specific requests into that if you wish, or if you want to just work with me offline and have specific requests as to, you know, budget items. And we can use those to help build the budget, recommended budget. I can't recall if we gave up last year and Jen, maybe you can help remind me if we put in a budget for planning commission training and then ultimately that got axed, or if we just didn't even try last year because we knew how bad it was going to be. But, you know, we can certainly, in the budget session, in the
Sorry, all of our training actually was, I, I believe we didn't end up with any training for staff or, or any of our committees or commissions.
Okay. So we, we can definitely address that. I did just want to share because I'd mentioned that I sent these resources to you and to share with the public what the resources were. City Council Protocol Manual, which was adopted most recently, re-adopted in 2018, that has a buy-in overview. So I believe it was actually most recently adopted in 2020. I'll have to verify that, but this is what's up on our website right now. And I believe Vice Chair Mayor, this was the document you were referring to, that has some discussion around interactions between, you know, the commissions, boards and communities and task force. And so this is, this is a great resource for you to kind of read through. It's really directed at city councils protocol manual, but a lot of it really is applicable to other boards and commissions. The other document that I shared with you is the League of Cities Open and Public. This is one of a series of documents and they just produce these really succinct, easy to understand, plain language descriptions. This one's on the Brown Act. And so this will be good for you to, to review. It talks about, you know, good public process. And then lastly, I provided you this, the planning commissioner's role, which covers a range of topics. And again, this is by the, I believe this is an ILG production, oh, League of California Cities, excuse me, as well. And, you know, this, this range of topics, I mean, it really is, you know, again, these are, you know, fairly short documents, it's only 11 pages long. It has real succinct nuggets that you can, you know, really wrap your mind around easily. We did have a, a training and in-house training with this document within the last two years, but it's worth revisiting. So if there's anything in any of these documents that you wanted to dig into now, you know, Vice Chair Mayor put forward the concept of maybe digging into this a little bit, the protocol manual. But if there's anything that you wanted to go into in any of those other documents, happy to give an overview or just jump into specific topics as well.
Perhaps that could be for another meeting. I haven't had time to dive into everything, but probably after we read it, we'll have some questions for you or Judith.
Okay.
Other, all right, are we ready to move on to the next business item? Planning Commission's Annual Report?
Yeah, so on this item, just again, I'll key it up real quick and then it's, you know, off, you know, off to the discussion. So I prepared the annual report draft that's in your packet before you tonight. And it certainly should be considered just a working draft. If the planning commission wants to adopt it just as is, feel free, it's ready to go, I believe. If there are changes you want to make, that's certainly your prerogative. Ultimately, what you will do is adopt this as your annual report for last year. And then typically the chair presents that to the city council. And the scheduled date for that is the 19th, so next, next city council meeting, to provide that to the, the city council. If for whatever reason you can't make a final decision on it tonight, we can always move that date. And certainly if the 19th doesn't work for the chair, you can appoint anyone else on the, on the commission, probably starting with the vice chair to, to present that to the council.
Has the commission had a chance to review this? Is there any additions or subtractions?
It looks like Dan has something he's trying to say, but he's muted.
No, Dan, you have something to say, yes or no? Do you know sign language? I can't, still can't hear you, you're still muted. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Commissioner Tegney, did you have a comment about the annual report?
No.
No, okay.
Sorry, I was unmuted and I didn't have a video there for a minute. I'm back, I have no questions. So if we don't have anything to add to this, you're looking for a motion to approve this as our goals for 2022, is that correct? Add or subtract?
Yes, yep.
To me, they look great.
So this is the report for 2021?
Correct.
And then our goals for 2022, right, okay, I see.
Correct.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the annual report and annual goals?
I would make that motion, I would make a motion to approve our planning commission goals for 2022.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Tegney, do we have a second?
All second.
We have a second.
Vice Chair Mayor recorded in the record as second.
Okay, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a?
Roll call vote?
Roll call please.
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Tegney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Aye.
And Chair Vasilek.
Aye, motion approved. Do we have any correspondence or communications?
I'd like to ask one question of staff. And I should have asked this earlier while we were talking about the Gateway Project, but with the accumulate, accumulate, all the community meetings that are going to be taking place and including things like our planning commission meeting with community input, are you, is there some kind of tally system or something? I mean, I hear you say you're trying to collect all this public input. Are you taking notes like, oh, here's another person concerned about traffic or bicycle parking or whatever? How does this all come together into some kind of thing that we can process later? I do recall in the past, on a couple of projects where there were downtown meetings that people put stickers and then we actually counted how many green stickers were on each topic. Anyway, there's my question.
That's a great question. And, and again, you know, we can't, because of its correspondence and communications, we can't go into too much detail, but part of what I wanted to convey to the planning commission was, you know, again, just reiterating some of the upcoming events for our, our gateway plan and, and the general plan. And I, I do want to acknowledge that we've been having that same question and discussing at the staff level, you know, between our, you know, our team, between Senior Planner Dilo Freitas and, and our Deputy Director Dart, that, you know, we really need to come up with a cohesive explanation to the community about how the input is being taken in, how it's being, you know, digested and how it's going to be conveyed. And it really, it's, it spans the gambit. We're doing so many different kinds of engagements that there's not one answer. So, you know, the, the, on the 21st and 22nd, at the Arcata Community Center, we're going to hold an open house. There's going to be a whole lot of self-guided materials that include things like sticky dots, where the community can come and tell the, you know, commission, the city council, exactly how they feel about building height, about, you know, the road design, et cetera, et cetera. We're also tabling that weekend. We're going to have conversations with people and we're recording, you know, and making mental note of the themes that are coming up and we'll convey that information. So there's really two different kinds of, of, you know, information in just those two events that are happening on that exact same day. But to your question, yes, I, I wrote down the topics that came up, the questions that were asked, the details. I double, I put check marks when somebody else said, hey, I want to double down on that comment so that we're getting a sense for in these meetings, you know, what are the important issues to people? We're trying to be responsive to those as well and include them in the frequently asked questions that we provide on our, our website so that people can get instant access to information about the, you know, the questions. So it really ranges, you know, it depends on the kind of event we're doing. It depends on the type of engagement that we're doing and the type of information that we're, we're collecting, how we will convey that to the city council. The themes that we're picking up, for example, on the, on the tours, the walking tours. I'm not carrying a pad and paper and recording words on, you know, that people are saying. I'm taking it in, I'm digesting and I'm making mental notes and making sure that we're being responsive to that. I can convey that, you know, and then we also have some more data that's a little bit more granular. We have, we're, we're going to develop a survey that will get into demographic information, you know, who's in the room, who are we outreach and engaged to? So there's, there's just a really broad range of engagements we do and we get a lot of different kinds of data back and we'll provide that in many different ways, but ultimately in a, a report to the council that ultimately says, you know, that these, these are the themes we heard, here's the data we collected, this is the summary of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely, so yeah.
Anything else?
Just wanted to reiterate, 21st and 22nd, we're going to have an open house. Please come, tell your neighbors, tell a friend, everybody's got a right to be grooving.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry.
That, that one's in person at the community center, is that correct?
In person at the community center, we're going to limit, it's, it spans over several hours on each day. And so we're going to limit the number of people who are allowed in the event at any one time. There's no specific presentation time, but there's self-guided materials. We're going to be replaying the hour-long presentation of the description of the gateway plan. We're likely going to have the very short description of what, what the SERP is, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program. We have a little video on that. And then we'll have workstations where people can go and, you know, it'll either be a sticky dot or a post-it note, write your thoughts on a post-it note, stick it on the, on the map, that sort of thing, so that people can engage specifically with materials. That will be, you know, conveying in, in a summary, you know, 50% of the people said this or 70% of the people said that. And we're really excited about that because a lot of people have said, you know, we need to have something in person. So this is an opportunity for them to come and, and talk with the staff member.
And that's January 21st and 22nd, correct?
January 21, 22.
And commissioners?
Two-day event. Commissioners are welcome, yeah, the community is welcome. Yeah, I'd love to have people come down. It's not a, a planning commission meeting, so we'll probably try and, you know, limit conversations between the two of you so we don't have a Brown Act violation. Read the packet that I sent you today.
All right, okay, meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Bye, thanks, everybody.